Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the May 7, 2012 Meeting of the Danbury Planning Commission. We'll welcome the meeting by calling the role Mr. Keller.
Here.
Mr. Uyra.
Here.
Ms. Hostetter is absent. Mr. Servanera?
Here.
Mr. Ferguson?
Here.
Obviously, here. Mr. Ferguson will present for Ms. Hostetter this evening.
Thank you. For the record, our next regular scheduled meeting is, will be on May 16, 2012. We have no minutes to accept, so we are going to move right to our first public hearing this evening. 7:30 PM, Sawmill Road Property LLC, application for special exception to allow use, Bolimo Air Controls USA Inc., generating over 500 vehicle trips per day in the IL-40 Zone, Turner Road, A17001, special exception 724. Mr. Keller, would you please leave a notice, please? Yes, Mr. Chairman. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission of the City of Danbury will hold a public hearing commencing at 7:30 PM on Monday, May 7, 2012, in the City Council Chambers and City Hall, 155 Deer Hill Avenue to consider the following matter. Sawmill Road Property LLC, application for special application to allow use, Bolimo Air Controls USA Inc., generating over 500 vehicle trips per day in the IL-40 Zone, Turner Road, by number A17001, special exception number 724. Parties and interests and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Commission members, hopefully you've received from Jennifer several documents in relation to this matter. There's a city report from our city engineer dated May 3, a staff report dated May 2, a report from Abdul Muhammad, our traffic engineer dated May 1, and also an engineering report, traffic report, from the applicant. If you don't have any of those documents, please be sure to check with Jennifer. Is there anyone who should speak in favor of this application? Please.
Good evening, Chairman Finaldi, Commission members. My name is Chris Donahue with the Danbury Planning Committee, but we refer to smart Donahue, DJ. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, which is Bolimo Air Controls USA Inc., property owner, as the notice reads, Sawmill Property LLC. There are two applications, of course, before we... one is the application for site plan approval, and there is an application for a special exception approval for a trip generator. We have with us tonight members of the firm, Mylone and Broom, as well as SLAM Collaborative. And we also have with us a representative of Bolimo, the controller, John Pohman. The application will, I think, be relatively self-explanatory. However, I have had conversations with neighbors on the Ridgefield side. I've spoken on the phone a couple of times, and then just briefly with a few of the mountain hall. And I do know they have questions, and we try our best to answer them in a short timeframe, but we will continue to have discussions with them as this goes forward, because I think it goes without saying, this may sound gratuitous, but of course, we want to be good corporate neighbors, and we want to work with them to make sure we're not overreaching and doing things that would otherwise impact them in ways that we can have. So, in order to get right down to the presentation, I'll turn it over to the balloon that approved. We'll give you both the engineering, as well as the utilities and the hostetter.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Mark Aragon, licensed and ICA bar effect associate, or the firm Mylone and Broom, or the resident applicant. If we can, the idea is that myself, along with civil engineer, traffic engineer, and the architect, will give you a brief summary of the application in rendering form. Then, I mean, by all means, if you have any questions, we'll all present things, stop us, we'll answer. But at the end, if you have any questions, or if you have any more substantial questions to do, if you wait for us until your presentation. So if I can, I'll approach the floor that we put up there. What I'm referring to is a site plan. Basically, the application that we submitted is broken into two sheets, just due to the scale restrictions. But this is a site plan oriented north, up, south, east, west. The lay of the land right now, what I'm pointing to right here is the New York, Danbury, State of Connecticut, boundary. To the south, we have Tom Richdo.
Pardon the interruption, but the public cannot see what's...
There's nothing we can do about it. The presentation has to be made to the commission. If you want to see it, you can stand over here. There's nothing we can do about that, sir. Go ahead.
To the east, at the bottom of the slope, is the large emergent wetland. The property line, if I can just point out one detail to the map, the property line for the subject application parcel actually comes out another acre or two, but for presentation purposes, and we're not imposing anything down close to the wetlands, we just left that off of the map. And to the north is the Crown Point Apartment Complex. The site currently, as it sits, the lay of the land, everything drops off. There's a man-made, created plateau up top. The existing Novo Labs, former Novo Labs building sits up top. From about this point, it drops off to the east, down roughly about 100 feet, to the wetland in the area to the east. Turner Road sits out here, and what I'm going to point to right now is an alignment that we plan on utilizing. It's the alignment of the existing access road to the site that meanders and winds up at about a 7% grade up to the top of the site. Because there was infrastructure and construction activity that was put in, we want to use that again, and our intent is to not do a wholesale realignment, reconstruction of that road, but we're going to bring it up to city standards. And we're also going to widen out the actual turning radius on that first switchback to make sure that we can accommodate all the vehicles that we need to accommodate, turning movements, stretch each other as such, to get up to the hill in an easy movement, keep them on the right-hand side of the road. As we get up to the top of the site, what I'm going to point out here is the existing building. It's shown in a gray outline. What's shown in brown is the proposed building. On the application, it stated the total square footage is 200,000 square feet. What's shown in gray, as we meander to the top of the hill, are two separate parking lots. And the reason why we're breaking it up into two is this building, in order to work well with the existing land and topography out there, is actually going to be stepped into the hillside. This parking lot, in a rectangular nature, represents 265 parking spaces, and it's actually 18 feet lower than the upper parking lot. We're able to do that by peeling off an access driveway into this parking lot at a lower elevation, remember this road is climbing up in grade. As we continue to climb up, we access this upper parking lot, 209 parking spaces, which would access that upper level of the building. So it's similar to a residential house with a walkout basement on the rear side. We have a walkout condition in the building, and the architect will show you exactly what that looks like in section. It's also included in our plan set. As we meander up to the top of the hill, I highlighted the two parking areas. What we have tucked into the corner here is our loading zone with loading docks, which are all detailed on the site. We have been working with town staff and fire marshal to make sure we accommodate all the correct turning movements. One change that we have made recently, the plan based upon a comment, is this is a rear access, emergency access road that we're proposing to put in. We originally showed it at 16 feet. They requested us to come back in and make that 18 feet to make sure that we have the width. There also was a comment to make sure that we can turn a fire apparatus or an emergency vehicle around once you get here. We have done that, we've made that change. As I mentioned, the upper plateau, we plan on utilizing what's here, the access driveway, we plan on upgrading, but then taking advantage simply of what's there. We also are in receipt of some comments from your planning department. Primarily, they consisted of taking a look at the front buffer requirement. We did go back out, take a look at it, if you visited the site. The area in front here, which is primarily was an area of concern, I believe, is really a scrub shrub. Got hit pretty hard in the October storms, fallen trees, not very attractive. We felt like it probably didn't meet that front buffer. So what we plan to do is stress up that buffer. There's a detailed landscape plan that we now included in the set of plans that we submitted here. We do have evergreen trees proposed here, where that existing woodland buffer gets a little bit narrow through here, we are proposing to supplement that with evergreen trees, native species. Detailed landscape plan is included, all of the shrubs and plants that are proposed. I think at this point, it's probably good to get into the traffic side of things. We're going to hit the traffic, then we'll hit the civil engineering, stormwater control, and then we'll finish up with the architecture. So at this point, we'll invite Henry Ditten.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Henry Ditten, a traffic engineer with the firm Mylone and Broom, and a licensed professional engineer with the state of the southern office. As we all are aware, Bolimo is currently located off of Ridgeberry Road, and they're proposing to move about a mile and a half to the site on Turner Road. We had the opportunity to look at the addresses and zip codes of the employees that currently work at the facility in order to get an understanding of the traffic distribution that we could expect in the future when the plant relocates to this site. What we found was that most of the employees are oriented to and from the north, primarily, principally off of Interstate 84. So we can expect the same at this facility, where we expect 75% of the employees to be oriented, again, to and from the north, principally off of Interstate 84, and 25% to the south off of Sawmill Road and Ridgeberry Road. The new building is proposed to be larger than the existing building, which just logically means more employees. The manufacturing side of the ledger will... it works in two shifts. The first shift is from 7:00 AM to 3:30 PM, and the second shift is from 3:30 PM to 12:00 midnight. The remainder is office staff. The office staff is our primary concern, our primary interest, because those are the employees that work from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And those hours just typically coincide with the roadways commuter peak. And the office staff currently is 142, and it's expected over the next seven years to increase by only 13 to 155. The office staff numbers is what we use in our analysis to determine what the effect would be of this facility on the local roads. As I said, the office staff, the people that are going to be driving during the commuter peak hours, and those are the people, the motors, that would be driving through our study intersections. Now, we did look along Sawmill Road, had six intersections. Those are our study area. We started from the south. The first intersection would be Turner Road, then you go up to Woodland Road, then Reserve Road. The two intersections with the ramps, the eastbound on and off ramps, and then the westbound on and off ramps, and then the road ends at Route 6, which is Milton Road. We increased the traffic on those roads, through these intersections, excuse me, to a future target year of 2016. We picked 2016 because that would include all the traffic expected from the reserve. So we did add traffic that we expect to be there in the future. We took the, what we call the build traffic, the traffic associated with Bolimo, added to the base traffic, which is the 2016 traffic, and then we analyzed and did a computer analysis of the traffic pre-build and pre-opening and post-open, which we called build and non-build. We conducted levels of service analysis on the traffic monitors, and we determined that the levels of service during the peak hours, in all the study intersections, are level of service C or better, meaning A, B, or C. If you've listened to previous presentations, you know that levels of service are A through F, similar to school grades, A being the best, F being the worst, and these are all level of service A, B, or C, so which is really an excellent level of service. That being the case, the only offset recommendation we have, because we do feel that the road and the intersections have plenty of reserve capacity, is on the northwest corner of the intersection of Turner Road and Sawmill Road, we propose on increasing the ratings so that trucks heading southbound off of Sawmill Road, turning onto Turner Road, could easily make that maneuver without approaching or going off the road. So we would increase that radius from, we believe it's approximately 30 feet now to about 50 feet in the future. Questions for Mr. Ditten, members? Mr. Uyra?
Again, what are the, the dining shifts? What hours?
Seven in the morning. The first shift is seven until 3:30, and the second shift is 3:30 in the morning.
Okay, so they'll be off the road by 7:00.
Well, yes, sir.
Anything else, Commissioner? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Darren Alvertan, also from Mylone and Broom, a licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut. I'm going to present the, I have a little more of a name, but it's the site, but being an engineer is what I do, over the drainage and some of the emergency controls that are proposed on the site. We did submit an engineering report, which documents our calculations in support of what you see on the plans. Essentially, this entire site drains to the east, or north straight up on the plan, and drains to the, to the right as you're looking at that plan, towards the wetland. And I kind of highlighted white there is the boundary of the wetland, which also extends off of that map further to the east. There is a watershed map that was included in our report that breaks down the watershed and the water deep, to show how the site drains and persists, and how it changes under these conditions. I'm going to go over to the map now, and then just point out some of the features of the storm drainage system. There's two stormwater management basins that we proposed on the site. There's one which we're calling the upper basin, which has a sediment for bay located here, and then the stormwater management basin located in this area. Essentially, what these collect is runoff from the two parking lots, and also part of the loading area. So we have two separate sediment chambers, where the stormwater runs through those seven chambers, traps the coarse sediments. There's also an opportunity to trap floatables and any sort of oils that may run off that may even be trapped in those chambers. There's a separate one for each of the parking lots. Those discharge into a for bay here, which is, again, designed as a secondary trap to also trap sediments. These are both vegetated basins, where there is some filtering of the stormwaters that runs through those basins. This provides detention storage, and there's an overflow into, utilizing a portion of the existing stormwater drainage system that's on the site right now. So the existing building is also, as Mark had mentioned earlier, located in a similar location as the proposed building, and it does have some stormwater infrastructure that's there. In the immediate vicinity of the building, we're not going to be able to reuse that, but as it runs down the slope, we are going to utilize part of that existing system. That system right now drains into a lower, kind of a low area between the switchback and the road. There are some wetland areas that were delineated. There are essentially drainage ditches that over time have developed some wetland vegetation in them. We're going to utilize this area. We're going to excavate a basin down a little bit further, provide a permanent pool. This lower basin, as well as collecting in series the stormwater that runs through the upper basin, we've taken the cleaner water from the building, and we have a collection system for that, which will allow that stormwater to come down the roadway. The existing roadway, which we're maintaining the majority of that, except when we get up close to the proposed building and parking area. There's a surface swell, which again allows, we're going to maintain that, allows for some filtration. So the majority of the cleaner water will come down and discharge into this basin. And again, we've put an outlet structure out here. We've designed that for stormwater detention. We've analyzed the surface runoff under existing imposed conditions to meet the city's requirements for not only the 25-year design storm with zero increase in peak rates of runoff, but our analysis did include the 50 and 100 year storms, and we do maintain zero increase in peak rates for those storms as well. The existing building on the site is going to be demolished, and because of some of the change in grades and accommodating the new building, majority of the infrastructure around it is going to need to be either removed or abandoned in place, depending on how the grades change. The site has been planned to maintain this existing access road, and the building has been fit into the grades as best as we could possible to fit it in. That's why you see the building and also the parking lots step down to try and fit into the landscape that exists there. We do have some site constraints, recognizing that we're maintaining the existing road here. There are some elevations we need to maintain to get proper access up into the existing parking area, accommodate the loading zone, as well as the lower parking lots. So the elevation of the building was set considering the existing landscape to kind of minimize the earthwork. More earthwork you have, the money you spend to build the site, so we've tried to minimize that for cost savings as well. Also, since there is an existing building there, there's all the utility infrastructure in place. There's a Santeri sewer line, which runs very close to the existing drainage line here through the opening and the vegetation. There's also a water line that serves the building. Again, outside of the building development area, we're going to maintain those utility services that come up, also electric and communications. To the extent possible, those are going to be utilized when the final loading is done for the building. And working with the individual utility companies, there may be some upgrades that are needed, but the facilities are on site, and we are able to maintain a majority of them, just make the connection and reorient them for the new building. There was a sediment erosion control plan that was provided with the site plans that were submitted. It's been designed in accordance with the 2002 DEP Erosion Sediment Control Manual. We provide not only for printer controls, we provide for learning controls such as sediment basins, and we're able to utilize this upper basin here also during construction. During construction, that's just a temporary situation where the erosion controls are put in place to avoid excessive erosion from the site. And we have utilized this existing paved access drive for the construction access as well. The upper part where the pavement is removed will have a construction entrance pad to provide for, prevent soils from being tracked out onto the roadways. So how that explains most of what is either a temporary condition as far as mine design work or stuff that's buried around. If you don't have any questions from me, I'd like the architect to help it.
Questions for... Go ahead, Ken.
I'm just curious if when you have to put in a building and regrade it into the existing space, is there going to be any blast elements going to be needed to be required?
There were some borings that were done on the site, and we did look at those being on the top of the hill along the ridge line. We are concerned that there was ledge. To our surprise, we found the soils are very deep on the site, and we don't anticipate that there is going to be any rock that will be needed as part of the development.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Uyra?
You were talking about the retention plot in your design. Did I understand correctly, you're going to design, I mean, expand the retention plot sufficient to handle 100 years' long?
That's correct.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Overton at this time, Commissioner? Go ahead.
I can see the footprint of the existing building into the brown area.
It's outlined.
Yeah, where's it come, Mr. Overton, is the existing building?
Yeah, where would be the main entrance on the existing building on that? So the drive actually comes up and wraps around. We have the, what was, I believe, once a residence portion of the building up there in this location, and there's kind of an access way that connects into a larger building, which is this way over here. So the main entrance comes in, and this is kind of the courtyard area where the traffic circulates. And then there's another access road that leads up to the parking lot here on the north side of the site.
So the whole property is going to be kind of where the existing building is now, if you drive up to that courtyard area?
Yes, the courtyard is essentially on the western side of the existing building. The main access points for the building now are through this location here, through this parking lot, which sits up at the upper level of the building, where the first floor of the offices and the manufacturing space. And then this actually sits down about 18 feet lower, so access is down to the lower part of the building, which is some lower office and lab space in that location. The existing building does step down as well. There's two different four elevations as you move from west to east. We've kind of mimicked that if it's on a new building, but we're having to accommodate a larger footprint, so it's a little bit a larger area.
Questions for you, Mr. Uyra?
Did I understand that there usually, in the existing building, parking on the north side of that building?
Yes, you can see a kind of a faint outline of gray here.
What are you doing with that area?
That parking lot is no longer going to be utilized. We are actually doing some grading here to provide for an emergency access that we discussed with the fire marshals, so they can have access to all four sides of the building. And then we're creating, while we're doing this work, we're doing some earthwork here to create a flat path for the possibilities of future expansion of the building.
So you're not going to forested form, like, or grass, meadow, or something?
It's intended to be kind of a low maintenance type of meadow area.
Any other questions for Mr. Overton? If you know what's... Go ahead, Ken, I'm sorry.
Any thoughts, any kind of greenery, or something?
I think that might have been discussed at one time. I don't believe it's being pursued at the moment.
Anything else?
Thank you. Thanks. I'd just like to have the architect come up and describe the building.
Design team assured me that they were saving the best for last, so hopefully I can live up to the building tonight. Again, my name is Paul Aldinger. I am a design architect for the SLAM Collaborative, something they refer to as the SLAM Collaborative. What I'd like to do tonight is to discuss the plans in a little bit more detail, talk about some of the key planning drivers and criteria, and then also talk a little bit about the building massings and our conceptual approach to the exterior image. So with that, I'll get right up to the drawing, since I can't go and talk about those. Starting with the planning diagrams, the plans that you're looking at are oriented the same way as the plan on the site plan, meaning we have north to the top of the page, south to the bottom of the page, east to this side, and then west to this side. There are three plans. The middle plane represents what we call the main level, which really encompasses the majority of the square footage of the program. As you can see, the larger block is where we are locating manufacturing and warehouse, what we call inbound-outbound, or shipping-receiving block. And so this block really is about 300 by 475 feet. On the southeast corner of the manufacturing and warehouse block, we've located the office block. The office block has been, has really been organized on... The office block has been, has really been organized on three different levels, mostly in response to orientation and also in response to the natural topography on the site. The plans closer to me is the lower level plan, so also in response to the natural topography, which is a pretty significant slope. To help to balance out the cut and fill and take advantage of that slope, we've located a pretty large amount of the program actually under the manufacturing block. So this block really is located under the manufacturing block, and this block will accommodate the lab facilities and also the engineering offices and some other spaces, which I'll get into in a little more detail. To this side, we have the third level of the office block, and that block is significantly smaller, but it stacks directly over the office block that you see right here on southeast corner. And getting into a little bit of, again, a little bit of the planning drivers. We talked, of course, about the topography. The slope really slopes from here down, and then there's a significant drop once you move further down south. Again, the solar orientation and the views are important, so we wanted to locate the manufacturing spaces with optimum views to the east, which are less significant. And we also wanted to locate the office block to the southeast so we could take advantage of views, but also bring in as much natural daylight from the south orientation along this facade here. And so we're really taking advantage of that on both levels of the office. The, one of the other key drivers is really how we located the shipping and receiving on the site. So it made the most sense, referring back to the site plan, to really locate the shipping and receiving on the southwest corner so that we could really limit the site development to the west and also to the north. And it really works better in terms of the logistics and the inflow and outflow for the warehouse and the manufacturing. You know, I can get into a little more detail if you want to get into detail about some of where the departments are located and where some of the common spaces are located, but for the most part, the purple represents the common areas, like cafeterias and multipurpose spaces. The blue areas represent the departments, the service building. And again, the purple represents some of the lab components, and then the green represents the warehouse. So with that, I want to talk a little bit about the massing and the architecture.
I'm sorry, you can ask, we don't have an opportunity to speak.
Again, one of the challenges, of course, is you want to, as possible, you want to compose the building where we can mitigate scale of the building and create a balanced composition. I'm gonna, these are a little bit hard to read, this is black and white. You guys have seen these in your submit. So what I want to do is really start with the overall rendering, just to give you a sense of the architectural imagery of the building. What you're looking at is a view from southeast corner of the site. So when I talked about the three-level office component, this is the three-level office component here. Extending along the east facade is really a two-level manufacturing component, and then underneath is the lab. And then beyond, really recessed from the main facade, is the manufacturing massing, I'm sorry, the warehouse mass, which is actually really the tallest, the tallest component in the massing. So it gives you a sense of the identity that we're trying to create. And as we were coming up with some of the architectural imagery, we're trying to really capture the values and the identity of Bolimo. This is a company that believes in innovation in design. They believe in fairness to their customers and to their employees. And they believe in certainly environmental responsibility. One of our goals is to accomplish a LEED gold certification. So we're doing everything we can in planning and in designing the systems to be able to accommodate that. In terms of the materials that we're looking at, of course, these are just preliminary materials we're looking at. We have a significant amount of glass southeast, which is really an optimal location for that in terms of passive solar. We've tried to have more controlled penetration along the east facade, so we're using a series of smaller openings that allow a lot of views from the inside, but also help control some of the thermal loss that we're going to get if we have too much glass on the east facade. And then to reflect really the, I think, the attitude of the company that, you know, this is a company that makes utilitarian objects. They make beautiful utilitarian objects, we like to think. We really wanted to reflect that in sort of the general architecture of the building. And we just have a little splash of orange to pick up on really their company color, which is the orange in the window box, the main window here, and then also at the entry. The general materials are glass. We're considering some metal panels, which reflect into the light. And maybe some of the accents are going to be metal or steel, columns, double columns here. And really, that's in a nutshell what we're trying to do.
Mr. Keller. I'll say I might have bought a little thing before, since you guys are so lively. Anything about any solar panels on this building?
Well, I think if budget allows, the goal would be to provide a pretty good number of photovoltaics on the roof. And in the world, we'd be able to provide enough to power some of the generators.
Thank you.
Mr. U.S., go ahead. Couple of questions, just on the general design. Coming up in the upper parking lot to where I would probably make. It's a steps going up there.
That's right. We, because of the level change, we really have two entry points, as Mark talked about with my loan group. We have a lower entry point that will serve the parking on the lower level, and then we have an upper entry point that will serve the upper parking. So the idea is that we would have some way of sort of communicating between the two levels. So if you parked here, you could easily walk up the steps to enter the upper level. And vice versa, if you parked here and needed to go down to the lower level, the ladders and the fitness, you could do the same. And the idea is also to create somewhat of a, almost like a natural amphitheater so people could sit out there.
Well, I don't see any lighting anywhere in the middle parking lot, lighting?
This is a pretty early conceptual design. That's something that we were presented as part of the site plan.
If it's time.
Yes. I think I should. Yes.
Any other questions? It's time to shut up. Thank you.
Let me follow up. Maybe not so quick. First is, I received a call last week from a representative of the neighbors in Richfield who asked me, told me that he had heard that the company operated three ships. I told him absolutely not, and I reported back to him that it was only one ship, and I misinformed him because I didn't know tonight that it's two ships, and that's on record and aware of that. I apologize to him and to the neighbors for giving him the attention. Second, Benny Brochus, the planning director in Richfield, sent a letter to Commissioner Penali and copied me, and asked me some questions for me. Not sure I can answer them completely, but I can do my best. First question was how many truckloads of fill will be important to the site? I'm not sure any fill will be important. In fact, fill will be moved to the extent that fill is needed. We're certainly going to try to use the fill. It's kind of a global response to all of Miss Brochus's questions. We have not solicited a contractor to do the work yet. This is, we are under contract to buy the property, but the contract is contingent on our site plan proposal. So it wouldn't be until that time that we solicited bids and found a contractor. So that makes it somewhat difficult to answer the rest of the questions in Benny Brochus's letter. That is, what's the estimate of total truck traffic on the road during the construction process? I mean, that's certainly something that we would have a better handle on once we start to talk to contractors. The second global part that makes it maybe easier to answer this is that we do want to work with the neighbors. We have a sit-down scheduled with them, and we want to make sure that they know that we understand the impact that this has on them, and that we want to try to reduce the impact to the greatest extent that it has on them. And we understand that safety for all involved is a paramount importance. And certainly don't want to have trucks coming through at 80 miles an hour, nor do we want to have trucks coming through with materials falling off the back. So there will be as much control as we can exert over the construction process we want to maintain. Benny Brochus also asked how long will the construction activities take place? We don't know. The guess we made in the application or the notice to the FAA was 12 to 18 months. It's a guess. I mean, at this point, we don't know, and that will later enter the picture more clearly once we hire a contractor. What will be the hours and days of week for construction? That we don't know, but that's also a two-edged sword. You know, if we limit the hours and the days, then that makes the ultimate completion longer. We do not limit the days and do not limit the hours, it will be finished more quickly. But again, we want to work with the neighbors and make sure that we're doing right and be a good community member. Will all construction traffic be directed towards I-84 and not Richfield Tower Road? I don't think that matters as much to this commission, but certainly. I mean, I actually don't see it making any sense if you bend out to the site for a construction traffic to be turned right out of Turn Road and heading in that direction, obviously, in a world that would make no sense. So that's my attempt to answer Benny Brochus's questions. But again, the global things to keep in mind is we do want to work with the neighbors, but also we just don't know the answers to these questions in the middle of the construction.
Questions for attorney down here, Commissioner? Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone else in favor? Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application?
I got a couple of follow-up questions from the traffic commissioner. You kind of cross over the production shifts. First and second shift, what is the existing and the projected shift sizes? Must be a kind of...
Do you have a number of employees? I don't. I don't have the existing employees, and I give the future shift sizes. The number, the projected number of manufactured, manufacturing employees is approximately 325.
Total?
No, total shifts, all.
All shifts.
All shifts combined is 325.
What per shift?
And the first shift is approximately 275, which means the second shift would have approximately 50.
Does that include lab employees, or is that just manufacturing?
That's, that's all non-office employees.
So the bulk of the production and research staff will be arriving in for the 7 o'clock setting. How is that synced with, there's a pretty big employer just up the street there. I think they have shifts as well. How that syncs with their traffic patterns, that kind of thing?
I don't know what their shift times are. I can only imagine that most manufacturing facilities have several shift times. Could they, the border, I think we'd be using the same road? Could they be on the same road? If we got Old Bridge Railroad or on Smaller Road, so the traffic might be together on Interstate 84, but not getting off the exits. The border, I think, would be exit two, and we'd be exit one, for current exits off of Interstate.
Do I have a question?
Yes, we do.
Do I have a question? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak? Mr. Katz, follow up.
John Katz, Ruthberry Road.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Katz, come on up.
I'm not in opposition, I just have a question.
Oh, please, address them to the commission, we'll let the applicant respond.
I'm representing myself this evening, no other entity. A couple of traffic questions, if I may. If I understand it, the count that we were given and the levels of service were computed based only on the staff at, the proposed staff at Bolimo, and not on the shifts that will be exiting and entering, both exiting by 3:30 and entering in the second shift. Is that correct?
We will let the applicant respond to that, but I do recall the applicant representing that, yes. Office staff.
So we've then subsequently learned that there will be some 325 trips at least coming out of that proposed facility at the 3:30 shift when it closes down and those folks go home. If memory serves, that jives almost precisely with the time that busing occurs at that particular locus. And the kids are out and about getting, exiting from the buses and going home. Having taken that into account, either from a traffic point of view or a safety point of view, that is a traffic count point of view or a safety point of view. Number one. And number two, how can a legitimate traffic study be composed or computed if it doesn't take into account the entirety of the populace occupying the facility in question, which we now know is in excess of 300 people persons in the first shift and about 75, let's say 75 to 100 in the second shift? And as far as I can recall, there were no statistics given for the impact on roads of those exiting and accessing shifts. Is that accurate?
We will let the applicant respond to that question, Mr. Katz.
We were told, I believe, as part of this presentation, that site plan will take care of presenting the lighting standards for this project. Is your site plan review conducted, A, in public, and B, is it a public hearing when it is?
This is, this is the site plan.
This is the site plan. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
It's concurrent, the reviews are concurrent?
Correct.
The reviews are concurrent. So my next question, I believe, would not be too inappropriate, and that is, what is the lighting standard? That is, what are fixtures going to be comprised of? Will they be full cutoff fixtures? Will they be of a height that is, shall we say, compatible with the neighborhood? How is the lighting going to be handled, if you may know? Okay, I mean, that's it. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please, sir, come step forward, state your name.
He wasn't speaking in opposition in either of mine.
Just state your name and the association for the record.
My name's Patrick Clark. Clark.
And your address, sir?
Tennessee, Southern Road. We were talking about environmental, the E and all that. And I was noticing how they have several levels, which are not all equal, so that they're building as little as possible into the terrain. And I know that in thermal passive insulation, that you build into the mountain or the terrain in order to gain thermal insulation. And my question is, okay, is that because they were concerned about ledge? And they said they didn't find any, and it was significant that they didn't. Also, he said that he was going, they were considering putting solar panels, but that was discounted.
Yeah, you've got to be careful, because they were a lab use commission. You know, that sort of specificity, how they would insulate the building, that's not really within the purview of this commission. That's real specific stuff.
So they were expressing desire to be green.
Yes.
And yet, I don't see that except for maybe small windows.
Well, I think when I asked the question about solar panels, I got the sense that that's something they're considering. When I asked them about green roofs, I don't think that's something they're considering. So I think they're, I think they're looking at one. Green roofs, maybe not so much, but solar panels, maybe, maybe a little bit more. That's the sense that I got.
Maybe this is out of the line.
It kind of is, but if you have anything else, please.
No, that was my concern was, why didn't they decide to build more into, you know, have a larger building? Was it because they were concerned about ledge, which they never found? I just...
We'll give the applicant an opportunity to respond to that question. Thank you. Is anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this application?
Yes.
Step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, folks. Harold Maraknik. I am a resident of Turner Hill, and I live at 34 Born Place in Richmond. I'm here because my community, our community, has some issues with regard to the health, safety, and welfare of our community, significantly in the children that live in the community. There are 73 homes in Turner Hill, Connecticut. There are 73 homes in Turner Hill community, 70 of which utilize Turner Hill, Turner Road forgiven, as the primary and only means of in and out of the neighborhood. Okay? I was somewhat surprised this evening, as I sat, and I heard nothing about how is this project would effectively efficiently utilize that roadway for both construction and their ultimate purpose of getting up and down roadway to what was formerly Norris and then Michael Cast. I moved in in 1995. The relevancy of that is since I've been there, with either the Norris or Michael Cast, there's never been an issue, okay, with regard to use of that road. That road is a small, I'm going to say 17 feet wide, because I marked it up this morning, okay? Unmarked roadway that we utilize, our kids have utilized for years to frankly ride their bikes, walk, use as, you know, a way in and out. Okay? And I am, I am surprised that in reading briefly, council was kind enough to provide me just this evening a copy of the traffic study. There is no reference to nor mention of Turner Hill and its effect, this construction project, the ultimate project's effect on people, the kids of that particular roadway. In fact, the diagram that, that counsel referenced and the engineer appointed, who in fact cuts off Turner Road, which I am very concerned about. We looked at, I looked at, the requirements for approval of what it is Bolimmo asks this board to provide. And a couple of things stuck out, jumped out at me. And that was whether this particular project is designed in a manner which is compatible with the character of the neighborhood. It seems to me after listening this evening that I've heard no consideration from Bolimmo as to the character of the neighborhood. And let me, let me just suggest the following. Our neighborhood sits adjacent to, literally includes this property. There are four or five homeowners whose backyards look into this particular property. Okay? The effect of construction at that location, you know, I'll leave it by saying could be and will be significant. It, it amazes me, okay, that there is no reference this evening to those homeowners and to the community as a whole. And, and just, you know, off the top of my head as I sit and I think about this, as far as compatibility with the character of the neighborhood. Turner Hill since 1995 has had a little pool at the end of it, okay? That literally sits adjacent to the entryway for what will be Bolimmo. Okay? We have a pool house there. And frankly, the kids walk, in the summer, every day to and from the pool. It amazes me, again, that there's no consideration of it. There's no talk about the community. There's no talk about, you know, whether this will create, in that respect, conditions adversely affecting traffic safety. Mr. Katz was good enough to bring...
Hold on one second. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Katz was good enough to bring up the timing of the in and out of the shifts. Having three daughters in school, our middle school bus arises, arises, arrives between 3:30 and 3:45 every day. It leaves in the morning, 7 o'clock-ish, okay? I suggest that this creates an issue. I suggest this creates a condition that will certainly adversely affect traffic safety and will most definitely cause undue traffic congestion and problems for the kids getting on and off the bus. The, the other issue that, that, and maybe I missed it, please correct me if I'm wrong. When you leave or enter Turner Road, there is to your left, you go out of Turner Road and make a left-hand turn toward Route 84, and you pass Boeing, the entrance to the Matrix, and the apartments on the left, okay? There is a curve, the likes of which, I can only describe it as a hairpin curve, okay? That I, I can't even begin to imagine a tractor trailer or a truck making that turn with any degree of urgency. Okay? That likewise, and I, I did not hear that discussed. I did not see it referenced in what counsel was good enough to provide me with the traffic study and what they propose is going to happen with that curve. The other issue is emergency vehicles.
Could I just stop for a second?
Sure.
I had the opportunity to drive down Sawmill and take a right onto Turner. The, the hairpin turn you're, you're referring to is where specifically?
On Sawmill Road.
All right.
Just before you make the right in turn into Turner Road.
Right after Ann's Place.
Right after Ann's Place.
It's posted as a dangerous curve or not?
It's, it's a, as you're going down Sawmill, as you're driving home.
From Exit 1.
It's a right turn before turn?
No, sir. If, if you're coming off Exit 1, you make a right in turn out the hill.
Yes.
You pass Ann's Place on the right.
Yes.
Just after Ann's Place, there is a turn that, that is somewhat... Drive right.
Okay.
And our right turn into Turner Road is a right in turn out of that curve.
Okay, gotcha. I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, no, no, sure, sure. So I, I am concerned and I suggest that, that this is an issue. And it's an issue for a variety of reasons, including what's going to happen to the traffic flow trying to enter Turner Road, from that curve off of Sawmill Road, and leaving Turner Road, not only at, at shift changes, but all day long, okay? And which, which leads me to another issue that I was thinking about just today. Last week, we had an incident in the neighborhood where it required an ambulance, two fire trucks, and a police car come to the aid or assistance of one of our residents there, okay? I, I, I started to think what happens if, if, you know, there are trucks trying to get down a 17-foot wide street or at shift chains. I'm, I'm concerned about that aspect of this as well, which the only reference to emergency vehicles I heard about was the reference to the turnaround behind the actual facility. The other issue that is also a concern of mine, and I suggest our communities, which also, again, please correct me if I'm wrong, I did not hear, was environmental issues. We are fortunate enough in the community to have a pond that abuts our pool and our pool house. On a, on a semi-regular basis, we find turtles all over the road. We find, you know, wild turkey. We find all kinds of, of, you know, of wildlife that has not, at least from what I heard tonight, been addressed. I, I, I know that I was told today that there are bog turtles that are endangered species in this very, in this area. I have not heard anything about that particular species of turtle, whether there's been a study with regard to it or anything like it. Um, additionally, I also was told today that I should ask the board and the representative from Bolimmo about bats, whether there's been a study as to the endangered bat in Ridgefield, the Danbury area. This too is news to me. But I heard nothing about that as well.
Do you have a question, Mr. Katz?
I just have a comment from staff. Is the IC still...
Uh, the Environmental Impact Commission opened their meeting last Wednesday. And it's my understanding that they will be looking at the application this Wednesday.
The reason why I bring that up is I'm thinking many of the questions you're asking are how to be addressed by the environmental impact.
And, and I wasn't sure whether I should raise them tonight, but I want the board to know that this is, this is the, this is the phase of what they need about, and here they are, and if we have to redress them.
Thank you.
No, thank you for that. You know, the other thing that actually was curious to me, when I heard about the demolition, I didn't hear anything about asbestos. I have no, I mean, this building is relatively old, okay? And in my field, we're, you know, conscious of asbestos and what happens to it and how we're going to evade the issue if it exists. I heard nothing about that in the study. With, with four or five different homes in the community that are literally are adjacent to this particular facility with, with dust flow and airflow and air quality issues, I am concerned, the board should be likewise concerned, that there are issues there. I heard nothing about that in any of the studies I heard tonight. Look, the bottom line is that, that I, I, I know Mr. Donahue for many, many years. But I, I happen to respect him. I respect what he's doing. We too want to be good neighbors. We, we too want to do the right thing here. I, I have, and Chris referenced it, you know, he told me yesterday, yes, we did speak, we have spoken, and I am looking forward to meeting with him and representing us from Bolimmo as he said. However, there are concerns here, okay? Very significant concerns. And most of them have to do with the health and safety of our neighborhood, which has been elevated tonight by virtue of the lack of existence of a consideration for our neighborhood. Okay? I'm not here waving a flag saying, you know, God bless America and my children. I am saying I'm surprised by it and concerned by it. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My name is Joe Gaiders. I live at 21 McKean Place in Ridgefield, also in Turner Hill, and I just have some specific questions. For the traffic engineer, I'm wondering if the, the curve that Harold was referring to, which is posted as a dangerous curve by the city of Danbury, there's a sign posted there. I wondered if, if you took that into consideration in, in your traffic analysis. And secondly, um, the proposal, as I understand this, for Bolimmo to purchase only 34 or 35 acres of this 115, 115 acre site, what, what traffic capacity did you reserve for the remainder of that site, should it be developed in the future or near future? And for the engineer, you made passing reference to upgrading utility services to this site. I'm wondering what that means. Do you have exist, does the existing water surface, for example, provide adequate flow and static pressure for a fire sprinkler system in a building of this size? And if not, are you guys in it no matter what? You're going to upgrade it? Is the, that little pump station that serves our community and Ann's Place, is, is that sufficient to handle the loads from, from the facility? Those are my questions.
We'll give the applicant a chance to respond to that. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone else in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this application? What? What's your question?
The first gentleman, uh, Henry Duncan, my colleague here. The first gentleman, uh, didn't catch his name.
Mr. Katz.
Mr. Katz. I think confuse the number of employees with the number of trips. Number of vehicle trips are typically less, for this land use, typically much less than the number of employees. He said that with the 325 employees, there'd be 325 trips. And that's just not the data. There's, there's less trips typically based on statistical data than the number of employees. And the change in shift times typically occurs when the highway traffic, you call that the background traffic, is much less than the peak hour traffic. So you could really accommodate many more vehicles on the road during off-peak hours, especially 6:00 to 7:00 in the morning than you can at 8:00 to 9:00 in the morning. Even the office employees come in for 8:00. They're not traveling on the road 8:00 to 9:00. They're traveling, let's just say, 7:30 to 8:00. Then the traffic volume 7:30 to 8:00 is much less than 8:00 to 9:00. So I think we're, we're really in a good place with the traffic volume. And the shift change in the afternoon, 3:30, as far as the background traffic, is still less than the peak hour traffic. So as traffic is here in potential looks at peak hour at the worst-case conditions, and I'm sure you've heard this before, sitting on the commission, we tend to look at peak hour, worst-case conditions. So if the peak hours can accommodate the traffic, then the other hours of the day certainly should be able to accommodate the traffic. And there would be less, less vehicles. I always say less congested. I don't want to use the word congested because the traffic lines up here are relatively extremely light. I mean, we're not talking about a lot of vehicles. It's, it's a lot to the neighborhood. I, I agree with that. But it's not a lot based on many of the other roads around, around the city. So I think we have to understand that.
I think I'm just, not to, just to paraphrase what Mr. Katz said, it was the level of service at the various intersections. I think his concern was that when you talk about peak for this particular use, it's the, the office staff, they arrive and exit at peak.
Yes.
The manufacturing staff arrives before peak. Was the level of service determined using peak or before peak? Or, or is, is it a blend of the two?
Well, no, it's not a blend of the two. The level of service was based on peak hour. On the peak, taking the office traffic and superimposing it on the background traffic, the street traffic during the commuter peak hours. If the office, if the manufacturing staff, the rest of the population arrives earlier, then the street traffic is much less. So if you add the higher number of manufacturing traffic to the lower volume of street traffic, that blend is much less than the combined composite effect during the peak hour. So that's why we look at the peak hour, because that is the worst-case condition.
Yes, you look, you look at peak, peak hour versus when the majority of the employees are going to show up. Because they're, the theory being they're coming before peak, so it, so it's naturally going to be less traffic. That's correct. That's the theory, okay.
That's correct. Because the effect, the effect is... Exactly, that's why I said typical. But in this case, you look and you do not create a decrease. There is still much less. I'm going to... Just to delay the report, you don't pass that around?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman? No, that is the...
Don't mark that as exhibit A. Go ahead with the difference.
If you look at these, at this graph, it's, it's a bar chart of the traffic that occurs from 5:00 a.m. in the morning to 7:00 p.m. at night, a little bit to the north on Sawmill Road. So you can see the peak hours, in this particular case, 8:00 in the morning, the peak hour is significantly higher than the hours approaching the peak from 5:00 to 8:00. And it drops down in the middle of the day and then goes up again during the afternoon commute begun. And you can see shaded in blue is the manufacturing traffic and shaded in, what I might call a violet or purple, is the office traffic. So if you look at the two peaks, they're much higher than anything that could be associated with the travel time during manufacturing. I also want to point out that this is not a raw site. There's a building on the site. There was manufacturing or lateratories on the site. There was truck traffic to the site previous to. We're not creating something that, uh, dangerous curve. I don't think I've seen a sign out there that says dangerous curve. Now, there may be signs that show a curve in the road, but that's to warn motors that there's a curve in the road. I'm sure it doesn't say dangerous. I think the liability in the city would be tremendous.
They'll say dangerous curve. We will, we will question the knowledge of the people that live there. Fair enough, it says dangerous curve. I didn't see either, but I believe in the ones.
But regardless, trucks do use the road. People have used the road. It's not something new. The hand trainers are around that curve. I'm sure comfortably, otherwise the city would have to... I'm sure comfortably, otherwise the city would have their share of improvements. As far as the neighborhood, we do know that there's a neighborhood, we do know that there's residences there. We do, you can't really take it into account to say, because there's residences there, there's houses there, I heard there are seventy-three houses there, that you just shut everything else down. The communities have to live in harmony. Again, this building was there probably before all or most of the residences. And this is an industrial facility, and they do have to have access to the site. So there are laws, there are rules and regulations that govern the speed of vehicles. If a bus stops and puts his lights on, all the vehicles behind him and in front of it are going to be stopping also. So there will have to be a balance between the manufacturing staff that does exit during the shift time of three-thirty, understanding that there is a community there. I'm sure there'll be some publicity, some informational booklets or whatever sent around to the employees for them to be cognizant that there are kids in the area, that there are possible school bus stops. But yeah, I think since the manufacturing facility is there, the Nova Labs is there, it's just going to have to be a harmonious mix there. Unless the future has other questions, I think.
Yeah, I think if I can do again.
State your naming as would describe this.
Again, for record, Mark, we're building my own room. What I think we'll do now is, my colleague Darren, someone engineer over there, we're writing down the comments. We'd like to just give a chance to address those, we'll march right down, hopefully we can.
May I ask a follow-up to the traffic component?
I think, just let them have, we can do their rebuttal and then we'll. We can't sort of go back and forth, it'll hold them. So go ahead.
Thank you. I apologize, I know that we're separate speakers, but we're going to address them as if they all came from one. Question was brought up about lighting. On our plans as detailed and submitted to you, we have lighting fixtures detailed with full cutoff fixtures, twenty-foot mounting heights, I believe twenty-three foot is permitted in this zone. We have, we're proposing twenty-foot wall lights. Keep in mind that we are proposing a certain level of LEED certification, which when you look at site lighting in full cutoffs, the requirements are actually more stringent than any town or city regulation would be. And that's something that we want to abide by. What I want to point out on the site plan is the parking lots, the idea and the plan behind the site lighting was to provide safe access to and from the parking lots. Right now, we're not proposing lighting along the access road other than increasing the lighting to a more safe level to allow functional use of this parking lot in the evening for the shift change.
So that's along the driveway you leave the site?
Right here.
Going up the hill?
Correct. Within the parking lot itself and within the loading area here, there will be lights upon the building. Again, they will be full cutoff fixtures abiding by that LEED certification, which is a very fine line which we have to meet. But again, they're all detailed in the plan set. There were some questions brought up regarding the environmental concerns. I know we've all presented the EIC, but in fairness to the people who are here, as part of the EIC application, it is very detailed. The natural diversity database was contacted through Connecticut DEEP. There were no endangered species or areas of species of special concern listed within this private boundary or actually within a certain circumference around the property boundary. We also mapped the wetlands on the site and had two wetland scientists walk this project several times. They also, when they're walking the site, keep an eye out for things like this, because we don't want to be surprised either when we get to this point. They did not note any species of oil at that point either. Just a quick point, the watershed of the large wetland that sits out here divide is Turner Road. And again, I did describe earlier that we cut this map off to blow it up for presentation purposes, but included in our full application plan set, we do show more of Turner Road in the surround here. The large wetland that we have talked about several times doesn't flow south in this vicinity in front of any of the neighbors. It actually flows to the north. So if there was any concern, Darren went through and explained the level of treatment of the sawmill water quality that we are proposing. But once it does enter the large wetland area, it flows north and not south. Buffering, that was brought up, and I did mention it a little bit earlier. We do have a front buffer setback along our frontage that I talked about a little bit earlier, and we have went through a modification to this based upon some comments from town staff. Again, we went out and documented where the existing vegetation meets the requirement or in most cases exceeds the requirement. What we are proposing to do is along this frontage, immediately adjacent to the bend in Turner Road here, we're going to clean up that area. Right now, it doesn't look very attractive. It would sit there for a while if we weren't coming along. And I think if you look at the plan that we're proposing to do along this frontage, although we have quite a bit of buffer to the site, we are proposing and it's on the table right now to enhance that. Where the existing buffer gets thin now on the site, again, I pointed out here, we are proposing a pretty substantial evergreen planting in this area. And again, if they have to be supplemented or enhanced, that's something that we're going to be discussing and continuing to work on. And then the last thing that I'll leave you with before Darren Overton addresses a couple is sidewalks. We have been in discussion with town staff regarding sidewalks, sidewalks along the frontages. And what we are agreeing to do, we can work out the details, are install a sidewalk along the frontage of our property. We'll work out the details on where it ends. We do get type the guide rail where the road, the guide rail, or well happens. But along our frontage, we are committed, Belimo has committed to install a sidewalk along the frontage. So to keep moving, I asked Darren to address some of the more.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
Hold on, one second, just a minute. You go first.
Are you sure? Thank you. Mark, can you give me two numbers? One, I'm looking for the distance from the nearest house to the corner of the building. Nice. And the distance to the pool that one of the neighbors talked about. I don't know if we have the boards, I know we have the aerial on our map if we need it.
We can say, we'll get it in a minute.
Hold on, now we're back to Mr. Dittman, now we're going to go to Mr. Overton.
There was one question I did overlook, I see, and I have an answer written down. The question regarding the additional property in the front that is some industrial. The question was, did we include reserved capacity for the development of that site? And the answer is, typically you do not include something that hasn't been proposed yet, because it would be presumptive of us to guess how large or how many vehicle trips would be generated by that site. So we only build what has been approved previously.
You'd have to come in for, you'd have to come in and have another public hearing.
Well, it's not necessarily, it depends if it's a permitted use or a ground special.
An applicant would have to make sure that there be enough capacity on the road to accommodate that plan regardless of public hearing.
Again, there are number two for the record. There was some discussion about the width of the road. I'm not sure where the seventeen feet was measured. Everywhere along our frontage where I measured Turner Road, it's twenty-two feet wide. And even as it extends into Ridgefield and on changes at the Barnum Road, it's still shown as twenty-two feet wide. So I'm not sure where the seventeen comes from. There's also a discussion of the effect of construction. There are going to be some temporary nuisance situations as there is with any construction site. This development as it's proposed, is proposed as part of the site plan. It is consistent with the regulations. It's part of what was planned for the site and what we're designing here, we're not asking for anything special. It's part of what was planned and is relatively similar to use that was already on the site. Recognizing that there is going to be some demolition and construction involved with this project, there's certainly going to be some nuisance situation materials we need in the site. But again, that's a temporary situation, and there will be proper signage that will be utilized and acknowledged as far as the contractor of the roadway is coming into the site. There was a discussion about some sort of effect of this development on the existing pool facility as part of a residential property to the south. That is located one-hundred-and-fifty feet, I think, is I made the pool facility, from the town line itself. And that's further off to the south. Again, we don't anticipate that any of the traffic utilizing this site is going to make a right turn and head into Ridgefield where there really essentially no outlet. Essentially, everything takes the path of least resistance. We all do it, and that's Turner Road. So I don't believe there's going to be any impact on access to the residential pool facility. There was also another speaker that was talking about utilities as far as upgrades. We have done or acquired flow tests from hydrants, recent flow tests regarding the water capacity. There is adequate flow. The only issue, which, the same issue as it was with the Nova Labs facility as far as pressure. There is a pressure booster station that was provided in the Nova Labs facility. And right now, we plan to utilize the existing water main as it comes in and will design a new pressure booster facility to provide water service and fire service to the building. So the existing main as it comes in is properly sized, there's adequate flow, and the pressure situation will be designed into the facility.
Is that in response to the engineering comment about whether it's affordable for additional fire range?
Yes. And we've met with the fire marshal. We have provided access around all four sides of the building. You'll see there's kind of a paved roadway to nowhere along the western and northern side of the building that is for emergency access purposes only, so the fire truck can get around to the east, sorry, to the west, as well as the north of the building, but right now there isn't any access for the parking lots. We've also gone over the hydrant locations with the fire marshal. These were locations that were selected based on review by the fire marshal, of course, prior to construction and final location of those will be adjusted with the fire department's consent. As far as the sanitary sewer pump station and capacity, we have provided analysis of our site. Just off of the map here, there's a town-owned sewage pump station, I think is the resident correctly noted, as serving this facility as well as the residential facility and some of the other facilities in the area. The existing Nova Labs facility had approval for, I think it was sixteen thousand gallons per day of capacity, with also the option for an expansion of the twenty thousand gallons per day. This particular use, even though it's a larger building, uses less water and has less sewage generation. The computations that we've done are about ten thousand gallons per day for the two-hundred thousand square foot facility. So that's less than what was previously approved for the Nova Labs at sixteen thousand. We've submitted computations to the engineering staff in the city, which has been reviewing this and we believe are well below approved capacity for soon. As far as electric and communications, you know, this building was built several years ago. There's been much advancement in particularly communications, so there may be some upgrades to those facilities. I believe they're overhead lines now. We don't know entirely all the loading or what is going to be utilized, but those are relatively small upgrades as far as those types of utilities. The major utilities with an eight-inch sewer and that eight-inch water line, those have adequate capacity to serve the most of our.
Thank you, Mr. Overton. Go ahead, Dan.
I don't know if this is a question for Henry or for the engineers. And we've done it in the past where we've seen, we've requested road improvement when we see them needed prior to construction. Given the radii issue at the corner of Sawmill and Turner, would the applicant be willing to make that improvement prior to construction? To ensure that the construction vehicles can make that turn?
Yes.
And of course, that's up to the commission. That's just something I was thinking of during the presentation.
Could be a stipulated condition of approval.
Correct. Mr. Sumner, Darren?
Gentlemen, I was going to ask, as Abdul, come back to his, we have to wait a couple of seconds.
Actually, Abdul signed off on this. The issue with the increased radii came up last Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, as I was going through the traffic report, I saw the recommendation, spoke to the project team, asked them to produce a sketch that shows that that radii can be improved. I do have that, and if the commission wants to see it, I received that earlier this afternoon.
But regarding Mr. Sumner's question, it is of approval to that speak to the issues. Because I didn't know why that was prior to the study.
He did not. However, since I do have this now, this will be going through the traffic engineer board review, also to the engineering department and construction services. And again, it's a sketch, it will be fine-tuned, but it's just the concept of getting that improvement prior to construction. Because again, wherever this leads, where the commission leads, that would be something we have to discuss during the public hearing. We can't decide it after the fact and impose a condition that the applicant isn't willing to comply with. I just want to put that on the table.
Okay. Folks, here's how we run public hearings. As you just saw, the applicant does their presentation. There's no restrictions on their presentation in terms of time or content. I asked three times if there's anyone else wishing to speak in favor. And once the answer to that question is no, we move on to the opposition. Again, anyone opposed to this application have the opportunity to come forward, state their case. We try to be very lenient, there's no restrictions on time or few on content. We try to steer people toward land use issues if you deviate from that, and that is it. What we don't have is a continuous back and forth between the opposition and the applicant throughout the evening, because it just can get completely out of control. It turns, we try to have a dignified proceeding in the Worldwide Wrestling Federation, which we really don't want to do. However, having said that, I'm going to deviate very slightly from my own rules, and I will allow one more question from Mr. Katz, because he did ask for it, and I'm going to give him permission to do it.
I would rather the neighbors from Turner Hill and their position is more important than mine.
Okay, then, Mr. Morachnik, if you have a question, I'll even let you shout it out. I'm going to ask the applicant to respond to it, we'll go from there. You can't restate your whole presentation?
No, 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 of course not. Simply responsive to some of the things the gentleman said.
I can't, you have to ask the question. I have to present that to the applicant. I don't want you to give your opinion.
No, of course not, just several, just a couple of questions.
I'm going to allow.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Shall I approach or shall I?
I can come right up. I only tried to repeat things previously said, it's all on record, I'm capable of transcribing them.
Can you state your name, please?
Of course, of course, Harold Morachnik, M-O-R-O-K-N-E-K. Thank you, sir. I'm curious, in listening to the gentleman speak, we've heard about employees, Belimo employees. My understanding is that many of the people that work for this particular entity are really not employees. In fact, they come through a contract agency and they're contractors, outside contractors, who are placed at this facility. I'm curious as to what the balance is, employees of Belimo versus outside contractors who come in on a regular, semi-regular, or non-regular basis at all.
Okay, but not to be argumentative, but the relevance of that is what? They still have to drive their traffic as you.
Well, wonderful is coming into our community, that's why. Remember, this is a real unused residential. And now, in my mind, it perhaps raises security issues. It raises issues that we've never had to face before. Okay, okay.
I will let the.
Thank you, sir. The other issue, the question that I have is, if we're presenting for purposes of the board's consideration, traffic flow studies, I'm curious as to why it is we didn't do a traffic flow study on the road we propose using for this Belimo facility. We did something down the road at peak and off-peak hours. The applicant tells us that they've never been to the property, they haven't been there to see when the buses come, when the parents go, when the kids ride their bus, but they haven't been there. So I'm wondering why that's the case. It just was something, the other thing was, I kept hearing from the gentleman that this is the same thing, it was the original, it's originally what was planned. No, sir. My understanding is, unless I'm wrong, they're more than doubling the size of this facility and more than doubling the size of the employees that are going to be working at this facility. There is one other thing that we haven't talked about, forgive me. When you come into Turner Road from Sawmill, now we're coming from Ridgefield toward Danbury, and we're going to make a left-hand turn, that curve, I suggest, and I guess I'm diverting the engineer's expertise here, if they saw it, if they've been there, is a blind turn. It's completely blind. You cannot see what's coming from the other side of the curve, which would pull up almost past Turner Road. So I'm wondering, it has not been addressed here today, the study does not address it here today. I'm wondering if there's any consideration that has been given to that part of the road. Because while it has been suggested that they don't intend to go down there, what happens if they have to? You cannot see. You cannot see, I've done it a million times, you cannot see. So I suggest what their plan is for that. The other question that has not been addressed here tonight is, how many trucks are we dealing with? Are we talking about 18-reeler trucks? Are we talking about 20 a day?
And again, I will allow the applicant to respond, I think the applicant's answer was, they don't know. I think that was their response, it may not be the response you want, but they don't know. They haven't even hired a contractor, they don't even know, they don't know anything about this. They answered, that was their answer to you. It may not be an answer you like, but that was the applicant's answer, sorry.
And I just wanted to respond, in fact, on the pool, one of the gentlemen, forgive me, I don't remember who it was, I'm tired, said that the pool is about 150 feet, and there will be no, I think his word was no interference with the pool. As you come into Turner Hill proper, the first left turn you make is half of our community, okay? That half of the community, the kids that live in each one of those homes, 40, 35, 50, whatever it might be, ride their bikes on Turner Road to the pool, okay? When he uses the term interference, I suggest, I asked the board to consider that, I'd like to explain what he means by interference, because it's just not the case. It's just not the case. And as they speak about sidewalks, it appeared to me, and again, I'm wrong, but the portion of the community that plan on putting sidewalks in is also significant, because it doesn't appear that the portion that needs the sidewalks is going to be the portion that's going to get the sidewalks. Okay? And if I can put a question mark at the end of that, it's a question. The other thing, real quick, I promise I have two more. There's actually a culvert in this area, the Turner Hill runs over. I didn't hear anybody address that, I'm wondering if that has been addressed in any of the studies.
Okay. You're welcome. Now, here's what happens now, I allowed the applicant to respond to this, and that will conclude the people speaking in favor.